Excellent. I'd like to welcome everybody out to the first city council meeting of the new year 2025. I call this meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and then I'll do that and then following. Julie, would you lead us in a pledge? Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to come before you this day and serve as a city council. We're grateful for the blessings that we have here in the city of prosperity and we're grateful for the blessings of safety and all those who work so hard to provide that for us. We are blessed in this community with many opportunities and we're ever so grateful for the blessings of security. And we at this time ask that there be a blessing upon this meeting that will have a good spirit and be able to negotiate the things that we have in front of us in peace and harmony and that we'll be able to do the business of the city. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Stand.
Okay. Before we begin this meeting, I would like to turn some time over to our city manager. We have a very unique happening here in our city and we'd like to bring it to everyone's attention.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. If I could invite a very nervous Chief Byington up to the front. And also if I could invite any of the supervisory staff and Jackie, if he could come up. So beginning in the early 2000s, the International Association of Fire Chiefs chiefs put together a program because they saw a need, a really strong need to develop the leadership capabilities of managing fire officers. And in 2009, this group really started to put an emphasis on going through this program to develop leadership qualities. They found that a lot of, you know, a lot of leaders, a lot of people in leadership positions had good skills. They had good judgment, but they wanted to further develop those leadership qualities in the fire service. Utah adopted this program and there's a series of four certifications in the program. Three of them can be done here in Utah and the fourth one has to, yeah, actually have to go out to the National Fire Academy, which in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Is that right? That's still there? Well, we're, we're here to honor Chief Byington and I'm going to turn the time over to Captain Purser to do a presentation here, but he is the first one in the state of Utah to get the highest possible designation that's offered here. So, so just so you know, it's a supervising fire officer is the first one, managing fire officer, administrative fire officer, those are the three you can get. And he is the first one in Utah to get that third one. So I'm going to turn the time over to Captain Purser. He's going to speak on behalf of the department to get this done.
Council Mayor, I've enjoyed working here for all of my days, not counting tomorrow. However, firefighters don't like to receive recognition, but in due order, these awards have always been given out at city council meetings. You've seen those come across and Aaron has, Chief Byington has received one and has tried to play coy and hide it and not let anybody know. So a few months ago, a few of us of the officers got together and said, hey, he needs to be recognized for this, this amazing award. So the International Association of Fire Chiefs is, as Brody said, they have four levels. The highest level that you can get in Utah is the administrative fire officer designation. It came out about a year and a half ago and currently there's only one individual who's qualified for that. In getting information about it, they say there's about 3,000 hours of training and education that culminates in receiving this, this accolade. And they actually put together a little press release and it says, Aaron Byington of Syracuse City Fire Department has achieved the designation of administrative fire officer, the first in Utah to do so. This meant he spent thousands of hours engaging and developing his leadership skills through education, experience, certifications and training for all three of the fire officer development level, development levels offered by Utah. By completing this demanding requirements of the administrative fire officer, he now has this much higher level of leadership skills qualifying him to lead at the administrative level and beyond. His efforts also demonstrate his commitment and dedication to the community of Syracuse, Utah, and to his yet fellow Utah firefighters. I speak for myself and I know the other officers that are here today that were grateful for Chief Byington for his continued excellence in determination and leadership. His desire for education is infectious within our department. Also have you know that there's 15 people that have the managing fire officer designation in Utah. And I believe six of those 15 are all full-time firefighters here in the city. So that speaks of his leadership and capabilities. So with that, we have a plaque that a couple of us borrowed the master key together, snuck into his office. I, I told his wife yesterday on the phone and we took multiple people in so that nothing got touched. We removed it from the wall. We will put it back on the wall. So, but we wanted to present him the plaque that he got from, from the council. So congratulations, Chief.
I just want to say that I'm extremely proud of the fact that he did this in our city for our city. You've represented us so well. Thank you, Aaron, for all that you do. You are an example. We'll now begin our meeting with public comment. This is a chance for people to bring to our attention something that we may need to take a look at or something that you'd like to be heard on that may not be an open item on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has public comment tonight? If not, I will close public comment. The next item is approval of minutes from our December meeting. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? No.
Then motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is proposed resolution R 25 dash 01, reappointing disaster preparedness committee members. There are a couple of members who are still appointed from their current designation, but their term with the city expires, so we will reappoint them as long as they fill the district appointment that they serve in. Do I have any questions on that? Can I get a motion to make that reappointment?
I move that we approve proposed resolution R 25 dash 01 for the reappointment of the disaster preparedness committee members.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next is a discussion item and I'm going to invite Brody up to the podium, I think. Probably better do this.
Yeah. Is it okay if I just share from here? I'm going to share the screen here.
This is a big deal. I wanted to raise some attention. This is a very big deal that we've been working on for quite some time. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Brody to kind of explain where we're at.
Okay. Well, I am, I'm still within throwing distance. So if you need to throw something, I think you can still reach me here. Okay, this, this presentation is kind of a combination. Okay. So we're going to, we're going to talk about some proposed reorganization of the city. But then we're also doing our deep dive. So for those council members who are newer as part of our, our policy, every other year, each department gets a deep dive review. It's a way for us to just kind of check in with each department individually. Make sure that they are aligned with the, the governing bodies priorities and direction and vision. And so that's kind of the main purpose of this. This year you will be getting a deep dive presentation from administration from community and economic development and public works. And so today's presentation will just focus on the administration, which actually includes administrative services, the city attorney's office and the court and records department. So, so we'll have each of them present their, their individual parts, but there's also a focus of a proposed reorganization that you would, we're asking you to vote on tonight. And mainly because it is required under the code that city manager can, can propose reorganization of departments and divisions and things like that, but it has to be approved by the council in order for it to be effective. So as we look at why we're doing this, these four categories are really where we, we focused on what we're trying to achieve. And I got to give credit to the mayor and his leadership in this process as we've added the assistant city manager and, and then hired the backfield position of administrative services director. He's been involved in the direction of this along the entire way. So in order to understand the reorganization, I want to make sure everybody is on the same page and understands what, what we currently have. This is a very simplified version of, of the department structure of the city. You have of course, the, the citizens of Syracuse city who are in charge of the governing body, who supervise a city manager, who supervises the departments as well as the city attorney and the public information specialist. So that's kind of the layout of how, how we're organized right now from a department level. What the proposed structure is and what would be asked to be voted on, voted on tonight is with the addition of the assistant city manager, which was approved last August, there would be a shift in where three of those departments would be directly supervised from. So first of all, administrative services, parks and rec and public works will be moved directly under the assistant city manager. In, in concert with that, there will be a merging of two departments. So court and records will actually move into administrative services. So we effectively eliminate a department and moving it into underneath inside administrative services. Okay. From an employee perspective, just so that was, that was kind of from a department level view. In order to understand how that works with who supervises who from an employee perspective, this chart is, is a little bit more helpful. So you, you have, if you look on the left, you see the assistant city manager. He will have department responsibilities and non-department responsibilities. So those non-department responsibilities will include human resources, finance, which would include the addition of what we're proposing as a new grant specialist. In the finance area, we're proposing that we have an existing finance part-time position that will move to full-time. Reason for that is with, with the duties staying with Steve, he will still be able to, to run and manage the, the higher level finance issues of the city, but the day-to-day, you know, cash management, account monitoring and things like that would, would need to be passed off from Steve. And including the payment systems that we have across all the departments, the departments that, that receive cash. For example, got the community center. We have fees for admission. We've got CED, taking building permits and, and impact fees from developers. Things like that, that all need to be coordinated and taken care of with the high level issues and responsibilities that Steve will have. It's really easy for those, those small things to just fall, fall off the desk or slip, you know, slip between the cracks. And so we need somebody who's going to be able to, to manage the day-to-day finances. And so that'd be converted to a full-time position from an internal staff. We'll talk about the, the proposal to add a grant specialist, which would be supervised by the assistant city manager. And then with that, you have the three department heads, park and rec, admin services and public works director. So as you saw on the agenda, the mayor is proposing that Cassie be appointed to the administrative services director position. She would keep the duties as city recorder with her and move the court and records department under her in that proposal. The, the reason why that makes a lot of sense is these, all of those divisions are very administrative heavy. And a lot of them, almost all of them have a front desk component where we have, you know, customers coming into the building and that sort of thing. So having all of those under one supervisory person makes that a much more seamless operation. When you look under administrative services, that just shows how, how that comes together. Where you have the IT manager, the deputy recorder or passport manager, post office staff, the court clerk supervisor and the utility billing clerk supervisor. So that's the staff, the, the supervisory staff in administrative services after the reorganization. Okay. So we've looked at it from a department level. We've looked at it from an actual employee level. This is what it means functionally, what we're doing here. Before I explain this slide, there's some terms that need to be defined. One, performance management. What I'm talking about there is the, the performance of the city as a whole. Are we achieving the goals, the objectives, the vision of the council or not? And how do we measure that? When we talk about treasury management, we're not just talking about, you know, managing the cash at the register and, and the bank accounts. We're talking about the oversight of the, all the city finances, fraud prevention measures, those sorts of things. And then when we talk about emergency management, it's not just, you know, whether we have someone working on it or not, it's the comprehensive planning, training, preparing the staff, preparing the community. And especially in light of what's happened this year with hurricanes on the east coast and fires on the west coast. We can see how important it is that the city is prepared if we have a large scale emergency. And with these changes in this reorganization, we feel that we're going to be able to give a lot more emphasis and firepower towards these areas. On the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see the, the areas that are either just not being met, we're sort of bootstrapping it and trying to do what we can. One is construction management and oversight. We don't have anybody really to do that. We just kind of combine it with other people. We, and I help out where I can, you know, we had a police officer and myself basically overseeing the renovation of the, of the EOC. We have Chief Byington and I, I, I support him with, you know, me and Steve try to support him where we can and, and some of the other staff, but you know, he's really trying to be on top of the contractor on a day-to-day basis in addition to being a fire chief. And so we, we were just sort of trying to make it work, but, but really there's not like a coordinating or single person that, that's overseeing everything in the way that it needs to be. Spot auditing, again, this is, this is a way that we talked about in the truth and taxation hearing that we can actually improve the assurance that we're preventing fraud, waste and abuse in, in the organization as the city gets more complicated because it's a bigger city, there's more opportunity for things like that to happen and we want to make sure we stay on top of it. So under the existing functional setup, those areas in red, as you see, they just fall under the city manager and that's happened over time because there's really nowhere else to put it. And between managing the, the seven departments and other staff, they're just a bandwidth issue and that's really where the, the need for an assistant city manager came about. And, and so these things in red, they just tend to end up on the back burner unless the mayor and council say that's our priority. And so that's just kind of where it sat. All right. This slide looks a little busy, but, but I'll guide you through it. This just shows the, the reorganization with the assistant city manager there on the left and all the, the areas that, that he would supervise. And those, those areas that are in red and brown that were in the previous slide, they've just moved some of them. And they've moved so that they get attention and they get resources towards them. Or since I'm getting some time freed up, I'll be able to take those on. Specifically the performance management of, of the departments and legislative issues. One of the things we talked about was moving the emergency management function into the fire department. That's where a lot of cities have it. We don't know exactly how that's going to look yet. Because we still don't have a designated person that would, you know, that's their job. We don't have anybody. It would have to be just another hat that someone wears. But right now we're looking at different ways and the idea is that we come up with a two to three-year plan of how we, we get that ramped up to a point where it actually is running the way we need it to be. But for the time being, it's a lot of it's going to be done by committee essentially. Trying to do many hands, make light work type thing. Even across getting help from other departments and myself. With this restructuring, we, we actually are going to realize a total annual savings of $231,000. Where does that come from? It comes from essentially the, the, the moving of the court and records department into administrative services. Assuming Cassie gets appointed tonight, that would, we wouldn't backfill that position, right? Cause she can take that, that department with her. And plus, in addition to that, her starting as a new administrative services director, the salary is less than the, her predecessor who had been there for several years. And so the total savings is 231,000. In order to make this reorganization really, really function the way it needs to, there are some, with that savings that we've created, we are looking at adding one and a half full-time equivalents. As you see on this slide, one is the conversion of a part-time finance person to a full-time. The other one is the addition of a grant specialist, and this is really aimed at, you know, ensuring the financial viability of the city over time by acquiring it, as many grants as we can. And thereby offloading stress from the residents and we get grants from outside funding. We, we, we discussed several options. We have discussed, you know, by contract, a grant specialist by contract, a part-time grant specialist or a full-time grant specialist. There are pros and cons to all three of those. And so this is what it would cost for the full-time option. And even with those two additional cost measures, the net savings is $48,000, which would just return to the, the, the budget and could be used for other future staffing that, you know, we know that we're going to need as the city grows. Now I do need to, I do need to mention, I think it's, it's my responsibility to tell you that, you know, this savings and in, in the general fund can be used for staffing in the upcoming budget season, which we're starting to put together now. So, so that is your prerogative. However, for this organization, this reorganization to really function, these are the, the changes that we think will make sense. But we just don't want you to make these decisions in a vacuum because you do have other, other staffing issues that are on your plate. So you do need to be aware of that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mayor, on, on the grant specialist?
I do. If I may, you need to keep in mind that while we have a financial obligation to show that if nothing netted from the work on grants, we would be able to pay for this somewhere within our budget. The reality is I would set an expectation of that office delivering at least 10 times every year, the amount that we would be paying out. And I think that that's not unreasonable. When we look at the last five years, we've been able to capture $34 million in grants, but we've also left on the table according to just some rough calculations, probably another 50 million that we could have targeted. Now, would we have gotten it all? I don't think so, but we could have targeted. And, and I think that when you think about that, expecting that you could hire somebody for probably less than a hundred thousand and, and get a million dollars back in tax relief, that's the goal here. And so this isn't the goal to spend the money we just saved. It's kind of a placeholder for if nothing happened as a result of that, we would at least covered the cost. But I would expect that the grant savings is going to give us significant amount of relief in other departments. That's the goal of proposing this position. The other thing that I just wanted to, to let you know that when we saw that we would hire a assistant city manager, I just mentioned to Brody, I said, this is where we have to take the chance, put everything on the table and consider what the best structure for the city going forward is when we make a change. And I, I applaud both Brody and Steve after we found that he was going to be the person in that position for their hard work in really tearing apart whether this is the right structure for us, not only now, but 10 years from now. I think that the structure that we have currently was formed probably 20 years ago in the making. And as we grew, we kind of had some places where things needed to, to shape up a little bit. And I think that this solves that. And I'm very pleased with the work they've done on that.
Yeah. And, and you know, one of the points I want to make, make clear, you know, not, not just to the council, but to the public that, you know, we hear, we hear the message from the public on the demand to, to be efficient. And especially I think, I think people demand that from the administration. You know, a lot of people feel they, they understand, you know, what a firefighter does and what a police officer does. Most people don't really understand what administration does. It's just sort of these people in an office. And, and so it's easy to kind of point a finger there to be efficient. And, you know, I think it's important to know that, that we hear that, that, that message does not fall on deaf ears. We are trying to be as efficient as possible and we've been able to take the resources the community has given us and we've, we've saved over $200,000 with it. And, and we think the, the structure of the city is, will be with this reorg, we'll be in a better position to meet the future challenges of the city. So it's just in a better position altogether. So that's kind of, that's kind of the, the overall gist of the reorganization. Before we go into the deep dive further, I'll, I'll just say, you know, these are the key results that we're, we're expecting out of this reorg. And, you know, if you have any questions at this point on, on the reorg specifically, we can entertain those now. Otherwise we can go into the deep dive.
Counsel, this is the time we want to talk about the reorg. So.
No, this is one of the things that we actually, as we were going through and sitting down and looking at the positions, I think, especially when it comes to the grant, I think that's one of the things Paul and I actually challenged, something needed to, to fill that, that gap. And this effectively does that. So thank you for listening to us and I think it's a good path forward.
It's good to me. Okay. Okay. So let's go ahead and deep dive what we'll have going forward.
Okay. So, you know, and I was just talking about like, what is the administration? You know, it's important to know the administration is really what ties all the departments together. You know, it's important to know the administration is really what ties all the departments together so that we operate as one entity. You know, there's, there's seven different departments. Without any, any central hub or coordinating body, they, they just kind of, kind of run independently of each other. We also provide support to these departments so that they can operate as best as they can. This is financial, you know, overhead, you know, business type things that they need to do to operate, to have the equipment, supplies, personnel, all that stuff that's needed to actually do the job. The administration also gives direction from, that, that we receive from the, the governing body. And so that we're all coordinated and heading in the right direction at the same time. And, and what some people don't understand, administration does actually provide direct services to the citizens. A lot of them are, you know, customer service type services like passports. You know, we answer a lot of questions on their utility bills and, and things like that, 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 that come in and out the door. So today, as we talk about administration, we will be anchoring the whole, the whole presentation on the city's adopted vision statements. As you know, we will be talking about this at a future work session to update these or reaffirm these, however, however you want to do, do that. But these are the, these are the foundation on how we direct the, the operations of, of all the departments. And we have vision statements for each department, but today we're going to talk about these seven specifically. There's five here. And a couple more from the justice court. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Steve. As he's been holding down two jobs recently as assistant city manager, or at least ramping up for it, while holding down his job as the administrative services director.
Thanks, Brody. So I'm going to go through these briefly on the department vision. The first one here is employees are knowledgeable, courteous and customer oriented. We've tried to make that a focus ongoing with training our employees, making sure they are courteous to all the customers that come in. Second bullet point here is demonstrate transparency in, in conducting city business. We've worked a lot on trying to advertising utility bill out, out to the magazine, on our website and even social media to try and make sure that the citizens know and have all the information they need. Third one is IT, the, the city uses IT to improve communications with residents. That's an ongoing effort. We're continually trying to find ways to improve with, with the communication piece. Bringing Kara on has been a, a huge impact to the city as far as communication. I want to, I want to toot her horn a little bit to, just to say that she is awesome and she has helped tremendously in our communication with residents. In the fourth bullet point, it talks about providing IT service in an efficient and organized manner. And this is where we've focused a lot of our efforts. We've, we've been trying to go electronic on a lot of different processes and we continually do that. And you'll see later on some of the, some of the new processes that we've done. And that's helped us become more efficient in our utility billing area specifically. As we, as we bring on new customers and the city continues to grow, we're trying to find ways to be more efficient so that we, we don't have to increase our staffing. The second last bullet point there is that Syracuse City uses technology to improve staff productivity. Again, trying to find ways that we can, we can bring in new programs or, or use new, new technology to help. We did use our, our C Click Fix program that we have used for, for fixity requests in public works to now help do a lot of our work orders and utilities, which is streamline the process between utilities and public works personnel. And I think it's improved our efficiency there quite a bit. Last bullet point is IT services are customer oriented. Again, that's similar to the first bullet point. If you would go on to the next page there. So this is a brief overview. I'm not going to go through all these in detail, but this is broken down by division under administrative services. So you have a finance department. And this is the one that we're, we're proposing to, to change up a little bit to have our in-house person go full-time to help manage the day-to-day, coordinate a lot of the, the finance functions in that job. You can see there, there's quite a list of things that she does and will continue to do, as well as what I add to her plate. The next department is utility billing. Interestingly enough, when I started the city 13 years ago, I think we're around 6,800 homes or utility accounts. So in the, in the matter of 13 years, we've, we've increased up to 10,400 accounts. Continually seeing that, that grow. Again, we're trying to find ways to be efficient, to be able to handle that workload. Next slide, please. Human resources and payroll, some of the duties they do there with onboarding terminations, as well as payroll administration, benefit coordination. And we implemented a new wellness program in the past couple of years. It's been a big success with the city. With post office, it is a contract postal unit, so it is staffed with our employees. We do contract with the federal government. And we receive a 10% commission on all the, the volume that goes through there that helps pay. And, and it, it does cover, I would say 90, 95% of the total cost of that post office, which is great. Next slide talks about information technology. You know, this is anywhere from contract management to employee work orders, managing all the devices, the network, the servers, things like that, and coordinating with all the departments. That's a big key there. They, the IT is a central hub with making sure all of our departments are, are given the right technology and ability to do their job, whether that be with computers or laptops or iPads, things like that. Risk management is another area with under, under this administrative services department that we have to work quite extensively on. That's, you know, with insurance contract management, safety programs, workers compensation, OSHA, things like that. And also managing our property and general liability insurance. The last several slides are just key indicators or metrics as far as where we're at. And that gives you an eight-year snapshot. This is when we started doing our deep dive eight years ago compared to today. You can see the total utility count jumped from around 7,700 accounts to just over 10,400. Pretty big and significant increase. In that time, we have not increased our staffing in utilities. So that's, that's good news. That shows the new hire signups. You saw that steady increase in growing demand over the years and then COVID hit and kind of caused ripple effect with increase in pricing and interest rates. So I, I attribute this, these down, these decreases last couple of years to higher home prices and interest rates. Even, even that being said, having over 200 homes in a year is pretty significant. Going on the next slide shows you the total signups. The red portion is existing homes. That's just turnover when homes are sold. The blue is actual new builds. So that's new homes coming online and into the system. And then the next slide there is utility terminations and it has that same downward trend with, you know, the, the stalling in the market a little bit with the selling and buying of homes. Water shut offs. We changed our policy in 2018 to, to give better notice to the residents to show, to let them know that they're in jeopardy of being shut off. We, we now send letters, we do door hangers. So that's why there's that significant drop in 2019. It's been nice and has helped with reducing the number shut offs so that we're not, I think we're, you know, eight to 10 a month versus 30 to 40 previously per month. Utility late fees is an interesting one to me. It's, it's, it stayed pretty stagnant through the years. You know, six, 700 homes a month pay a late fee. And I, I chalk it up to either people forget about their bill or if they are having a hard time paying bills, I guess a $20 fee might be less than a credit card, uh, late fee, things like that. But it's interesting to me. They, the homeowners are sending a utility bill every month. It's due on the 25th, so they know it's coming. So I'm not sure why this number has stayed where it is, but.
Did you say it was actually 600 as opposed to 6,000?
Six, 600 per month. So about just under 7,200 per year. Yeah. Next slide.
But it's because of the way their paydays break down.
It could be that as well.
Yeah. So it's usually after their paydays, after the day that it's due and people that live paycheck, paycheck have to wait till the closest payday to that bill being due to pay it. And if you have to pay a late fee, you pay a late fee.
The nice thing is we do allow 10-day grace period. So it is due on the 25th. So they have to the, the fifth of the following month to pay the bill before there is a late fee due. So we try to be flexible with the residents. Next slide shows the total number of employees from 2016 to current. There's a couple of big leaps in here. In 2021 to 2022 is when we brought over the paramedic program from the county. And then 2023 to 2024 is our onboarding for our second fire station. At least the first portion of those employees, as well as many other positions we've added over the years with the growth of the city. Total number of hires and terminations there. You can see that it stayed pretty consistent over the years. And then with IT, it shows a good snapshot of, we had just over 500 work orders submitted in the system per year, which is, you know, more than one, less than two. Important point of that is these are submitted through email or through a work order system. A lot of times, you know, employees will just grab the IT people and say, hey, can you come fix this while you're out here? And, and so there are quite a few more things that they work on. Those are just the documented cases that we, we have to track and, and keep track of. The number of devices, 379 includes cell phones, iPads, cradle points, cameras, network servers, things like that. Interesting point is we do have over 55 or around 55 different software or programs that we have to manage with IT. So they have to be well-versed and understand the environment they're working in, in order to help these departments be successful. Last slide just shows some of our achievements this, this last couple of years. We've received our certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for 14 years in a row now. But some of the bigger points I want to point out is again, our, we, we've implemented online applications and disconnects for all of our utility customers. And I would say probably 90% of them now are using that system. We still have the walk-ins that want to do it, the, fill out the, the form in person. But we have seen a transition where people will actually use this system and it is more efficient for not only us, but for them. So they can avoid or don't have to come into city hall to take care of everything. And then again, the electronic work orders with, with utility billing, these are your, you know, re-reads, your, your garbage can replacements, things like that. And then we are continually working on installing access control and cameras in all of our city parks on the restrooms. We're about 75 to 80% complete. We have just two or three more parks to do. That's been my great success in terms of, we've actually been able to catch a few of the vandals when they have analyzed the parks.
To be clear, that's on the outside of the restrooms.
Yeah, we're, yeah, by law, we point them outward.
Want to make sure that's.
Yeah. So, you know, we had a case where one resident had got some sand or, or wood chips and was loading the toilet full of them and happened to just look up at the camera. So we had a clear shot of who it was. So hopefully it's a deterrent more than anything. We don't, we don't want to have vandalism in our parks. So I think this, this program's been a great success. That's it for my portion. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll pass the torch over to Cassie.
Okay, thanks. I hope you don't care if I just stay here because everything's right here on my computer in front of me. Okay. So the same mission and vision statements that Brody and Steve both mentioned apply to the people in my department as well. So Syracuse City administration employees are knowledgeable, courteous and customer oriented. That's definitely true of our passport team and our justice court team. They do work mainly at the front counter. They take a lot of phone calls with questions about the service they provide. And we do get a lot of feedback that they are very customer friendly and provide a really high level of service. Our passport team recently improved the services that they offer by implementing an online scheduling tool. So customers can just go right to our website and schedule appointments instead of having to make a phone call and spend time trying to go through someone's calendar to make their appointment. So that has really freed up the time that the agents have to do in-person appointments and they're not responding to a lot of phone calls throughout the day. And then as far as transparency in conducting city business, that is one of the main functions of my role as a city recorder. I do ensure compliance with the open and public meetings act for the state of Utah for all of our city council meetings. We post our packets well in advance of the state requirements. And we also stream our meetings on YouTube. We were one of the first to start using Zoom for virtual meetings. And then we continued to do that after the pandemic was over. And so I think people enjoy the ability to participate remotely and still wouldn't know what's going on in the city. This next slide just covers the functions of the city recorder part of my department and then also the justice court staff. So like Steve said, I'm not going to just read all of these bullet points. It's pretty self-explanatory. The city recorder function is myself and the deputy recorder, Marissa. She's really involved in our records management. She is assisting with responding to grammar requests. She digitizes all of our vital records in the city and assists with the contract routing process in addition to her duties as the passport manager. And then for the justice court staff, they also do a great deal of records management and coordinate the daily functions of the court. And like I said, heavy customer service component. So this is just a graph to show how our passport revenues and traffic has been tracking. I, I did leave the 2019 information in both this slide and then the slide about the justice court, just so you can see the impact that COVID had on our revenues and our appointments and then how it bounced back after the pandemic was over. We continue to generate a good amount of revenue for the city every year, right around 125,000 a year, which is a really, I think it's a really great asset to the city. It's a, a program that is paying for itself, but also generating additional revenue. And then the justice court case history, like I mentioned, 2019 is the blue line in there. So you can see what a dive everything took in 2020 during COVID. And then we have rebounded a lot. Our case history just continues to go up every single year. We did convert a part-time position to a full-time position last year. So we do just have two full-time clerks in that department right now. And no plans to ask for increased staffing levels anytime in the future. And I think that's the last slide for mine. Unless you have any questions for me.
I cheated and changed the title of my slides to office of city attorney. The two things we'll talk about are actually included in the justice court mission statement. But we pulled out the couple of provisions that do apply to the city attorney's office. The first one is that the city prosecutor will remain knowledgeable through such things as continuing legal education, networking, communication with other attorneys and so forth. The Utah Supreme Court requires that all attorneys may, excuse me, obtain at least 12 hours of continuing legal education per year. I choose to do those in areas that are vital to the city. So I split them between criminal law and risk management. Basically Olympus gives a free risk management course that's six to eight hours of continuing legal education. I try to sneak in a couple of post legislative session courses to find out what the legislature has been up to. And then I try to sneak into one criminal law related one each October. I get my 12. I don't do more than that. I know some government lawyers are proud that they get 100 to 200 hours per year. I don't see that that's beneficial to the city. I have a lot of work to do and I, and I do what I need to do. I get the training I need to train, but I don't overdo it. Is that the city attorney will behave and avoid prosecution that is not appropriate and avoid unfairness. I'm happy to say, I think I've only had two complaints that since I've been here. I'm happy to tell you what they are, that I don't want to disparage anyone on the other side of those issues. But litigation and appearance in justice court, justice court is sometimes adversarial based. You can't make everyone happy. And so I did one day with, I had a brand new police officer. He finished his first trial ever. I fist bumped him here at the table at the end of the trial. The defendant on the other side thought I was. The defendant on the other side thought I was fist bumping the victory. I would have fist bumped him even if we had lost, but I understand that doing that in a public courtroom led to the perception that I was somehow gloating that we'd won this case. Wasn't my intent, but I've learned that lesson. I also recently hung up the telephone on a citizen call that had been very argumentative, not only with me, but with another member of our staff before it ever got to me. And ultimately, I just said, this this conversation's going nowhere, and I'm gonna disconnect. Then I did, and that person took offense. So, yeah, I'm not perfect. I don't claim to be perfect, but I will try to be better, and hopefully I'll make it through the next year with fewer than two complaints. The final slide we have is an effort to sort of let you know what the attorney's forty-hour work week consists of. And I don't keep track of my hours. I don't do billable hours like private attorneys do. I don't keep track of every six minutes or every ten minutes or every fifteen minutes. This is based on me going back through about three to four months, just making little hash marks for the number of meetings I attended or the numbers of hours I spent reviewing a development agreement or so forth. You'll see that a good portion of my time is spent in justice court. With the exception of about five to six weeks per year, we hold justice court every Wednesday morning, and it generally lasts about four hours. You prepare for court, you go to court, and then you take care of the things that happened in court. And then you start over and you do it again the next week, and it just trudges along. It never stops. The rest of the stuff that I do is non-criminal related. It's meeting with department heads, meeting with police officers, meeting with court clerks, planning commission, CED matters, reviewing development agreements or other contracts, and you can sort of see how that breaks down. That's a pretty good estimate of where I spend my time. It's not perfectly scientific, but it's a pretty good estimate. Any questions?
Okay, that kind of wraps up the department review. Are there any general comments, questions as we review this, our biannual review?
As expected.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on. And normally, we would have done these other things first, but we had to have that first to prepare for the next. The next item, number six, is Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash oh two, Appointing Cassie Brown to the Administrative Services Director for Syracuse City. After what may have been an overly exhaustive process, according to who you talked to, we did decide to, or I am recommending Cassie Brown take that position. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll take a proposal.
I move that we approve Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash zero two, Appointing Ms. Cassie Brown as the Administrative Services Director for Syracuse City.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Cassie, on your new position. The next is Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash oh three, Appointing Steve Marshall as the Treasurer of Syracuse City. Just for those online who may not be aware, this is a position that was in conjunction with the city manager. Now that Steve is not the full-time manager of the books, this is a perfect opportunity to take and relieve that responsibility and also give him some authority to be that second set of eyes, where it's not a conflict of interest of him being his own second set of eyes. So this divides that responsibility very clearly and gives us some a second set of approval of people who are very familiar with finances. So is there any questions on that? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
My motion that we approve Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash oh three, Appointing Stephen Marshall as the Treasurer for Syracuse City.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Steve. Number eight, Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash oh four, Approving Changes to the Organizational Structure of the City to Enhance Financial Stability and Operational Efficiency. This is what we talked about at the beginning of the review. All of those changes have to be approved by you.
Mayor, just just so we're clear on on this vote, this vote is just for those organizational changes. It doesn't have any of the staffing
That's right.
the new positions in it. So this is just changing the organization.
Just the restructure.
Yeah.
Just the restructure of duties that we already have in place and approved. There's no questions. I'll take a proposal.
I move that we accept Resolution R twenty-five dash oh four, Approving the Changes of the Organizational Structure of the City as outlined.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number nine, Proposed Resolution R twenty-five dash oh five, Amending the Fiscal Year Wage Scale. This is making a couple of adjustments. Steve, I'll let you point those out while we go to a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. For this one tonight, we're proposing the new finance manager position. This is converting the the staff accountant to a full-time position and with the title change. So you'll see in the wage scale, the addition of one with the finance manager and the and the removal of the staff accountant part-time. And when we did this benchmark with our seven benchmark cities, there were two cities in our benchmark that had a comparative with our policy. It also states if with city council approval, we can go out to additional cities within Davis or Weaver County that are similar in size and service levels and pull additional comparatives. And that's what Bonneville is. That's why it's in the in the pink slash purple, whatever code that is. So with council approval, we would add that as a third benchmark city that just gives us a little bit more data on the comparative market for finance manager.
How is Clearfield paying so much?
If you will note, over a lot of the benchmarks, Clearfield has a philosophy that they would like to be the highest paid as much as possible of position.
You know, their roads suck, right?
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Back on topic.
Anyway, sorry.
Clearfield does tend to pay more than than.
It's just shocking to see how much more.
Yeah. I'm I'm just glad I don't live there anymore. So is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on Resolution R twenty-five dash oh five?
I'll go and make the resolution that we accept Resolution R twenty-five dash oh five, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five wage scale as outlined in the packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, and that will allow us to open up that full-time position. Item number ten, Authorize Mayor Mon to Execute Easement Agreement with Rocky Mountain Power Related to the Syracuse Arts Academy School Number Three Project. Noah, would you brief us just on this one quickly?
Sure. The you've probably noticed that they're building a school, and it's to the point where they need power. And so this is kind of a formality, just to make sure that the power lines within easement. There's an associated project that will eventually, if approved, dedicate Thirty-Sixty South as a public right-of-way, and then that will also be merged into a a public utility easement. So this is just so they they don't have to wait a few months for that plat to be recorded.
Any negative effects of this city?
No, we've we've been working closely with them to make sure that it doesn't come into conflict with any sidewalks or anything that we need in the future.
Okay.
I just make the comment that it's impressive, the speed that that they're able to build the charter schools with, and so I'm happy to help. I'll take a motion if we're ready for that.
I move we authorize Mayor Mon to execute the easement agreement with Rocky Mountain Power, play in Syracuse Arts Academy School Number Three Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we come to our second public comment period. This is a chance for public to come forward. Same rules apply. Is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment tonight?
Here's looking at you, fellows.
Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll go to mayor and council announcements. Let's start down at your end. Brett, do you have any tonight?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Julie? Paul? Jordan?
Nothing here either.
Jen?
Of course I do. So first, and this is gonna go straight to you, Ms. Care, for having said it before. I'm gonna say it again. We don't pay you enough. The museum last in twenty twenty-three had five hundred and twenty-eight visitors. In twenty twenty-four, it had three thousand five hundred and eighty-one visitors to the museum. So it was a huge ju- jump, and a lot of that we contributed as a board, that everything that you put out there in, you know, the social scene of all the phone instrument things that people like to hang out on. The Santa round was awesome from December. Christmas Eve, I went, got to play hopscotch jump with the cop cars and go for a ride-along with some of our police officers, and they didn't give anybody the tickets or nothing like that, but we gave people that they pulled over who were eligible for a ticket, you know, like their blinkers or something like that. A little Christmas card with some candy, so we made some people's night, and it was a lot of fun. Officer Sandu, Officer Heber, Officer Fox, and we also saw Officer Nelson, and they were all very accommodating and very nice. I wanted to give them a little special Hoover offer them. And also to say a big thank you to Chief Anderson and wish him and his lovely wife and their adorable family the most amount of luck in Farmington. And I'm following that up with, I just want to say, and I actually talked to the chiefs about this the other day, that I hear a lot of negative stuff come from other police departments about Syracuse and other cities about Syracuse. So I'm just gonna say, for you guys talking all that smack, you're sure hunting, headhunting our people a lot. Here's looking at you, Farmington. And that's all I got.
Okay. I am, I'm not gonna follow up with anything. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You're welcome.
Motion.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Roy is second on that list, so it's not like it's, yes, Farmington.